I'm Kathleen Haas. I'm principal at Hoover Elementary School and I have with me my K-Kid leaders tonight. They work in conjunction with the Kiwanis Club and they are the leadership team that helps direct some service activities at our school.
My name is Paige Lewis and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Dakota Ruff and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Tania Turner and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Nathan Virgil and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is John Williams and I'm in fourth grade.
And I forgot to mention that they plan to do, to give the pledge verbally and in sign language today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
It's been moved and seconded to let the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on March 9th, 2015, as submitted.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on March 9th, 2015, as submitted. All in favor say aye. Anybody opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Board salutes. Where shall we start? A secret?
Congratulations to the seventh and eighth grade students that were selected for the prestigious blank summer institute for the arts and sciences that's at the University of Iowa. The program's one-week residential summer program for 120 of Iowa's gifted seventh and eighth grades students. The institute provides exceptionally talented students with an intensive and advanced educational experience designed to enhance their intellectual and social growth. Each student selected will receive a $325 scholarship to cover a portion of the institute's costs. Six students and two alternates were selected from Jefferson Middle School. Two students and five alternates were selected from Washington Middle School. And five students were selected from Roosevelt. So congratulations to those students.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to shout out to the, to our district communication team for winning five awards this year in the Iowa School Public Relations Association Communications Contest. Our district communication team is doing a very good job of advertising and putting us out in the community, showing the good things of our school district. And they are to be commended. They won the District Website Award of Excellence. They won the Award of Merit for the one cent sales brochure. They won an Award of Excellence for District-wide Update Video. If you haven't seen those, those are great to look at. They won an Award of Excellence for the Roosevelt Middle School Orientation. And the Opening School Video 2014, which the theme was "Make Every Second Count," they won the Blue and Gold Award for the Best in the Category. Submissions for this contest were judged by and scored by school public relations professionals from the Kansas City metropolitan area. So to our communication team, Mike and all your group, thank you very much. Some great, great job. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Mr. Striebel?
I've got kind of a unique one, interaction with a student, but I noticed in the Telegraph Herald, a student from Hempstead, Jack Hostiger, organized a group to go over to, a leadership group to meet with the legislators over in Des Moines. And one of the things Jack talked about in the story that Stacy wrote was about the need for more mental health supports in the schools. And I thought it was really cool that a senior in high school would, would recognize that. So I shot him a little note and, and he wrote me back and I asked him if I, we talked on the phone the other day. I asked him if I could share it at the board meeting and he said to go ahead and do that. So he's, he's very excited to get involved in the political process. But said, "Mr. Striebel, this is Jack Hostiger. I was really excited to see the email that you sent Mr. Coker, that Mr. Coker forwarded. The lack of framework to treat mental illness for young people is a problem that I see every day at Hempstead, even among several of my close friends. It is clear that there is an enormous lack of resources for mental health treatment, especially in schools. The issues, the issue also stigmatized culturally and it seems like there isn't even a serious conversation going on about it right now. I'm certainly not an expert on the ins and outs of this issue, but based on what I have observed in school and in discussions we had in Des Moines last week, myself and several other students at Hempstead are definitely interested in continuing this conversation. Let me know what you think about how we can move forward. Thank you again for reaching out, Jack." And we had a very nice conversation the other day and we were going to try to get together on the weekend, but he was going to the University of Pennsylvania, which he's been accepted to. So he wasn't sure if he was going there or Iowa, but, but a really neat kid, very impressive. And he talked to me about trying to get a group together. He'd get a group of kids and I'd get a group of adults together and try and look at what are some real solutions. So it was pretty inspiring stuff.
Great. Yeah, we had the benefit of hearing from him at the Foundation for Dubuque Public Schools Luncheon and somebody made the comment, maybe it was Gary Dolph in the MC, I think, said something about, "He sounds very much like our next senator."
Yeah.
And he's a very well-spoken young man. So yeah, somebody to be very proud of as a district. Tom?
Yeah. Board salute goes out to Tim Hitzler, teacher at the ALC, the Alternative Learning Center. He was recently named the Newcomer of the Year by the Iowa Association of Alternative Education. So congratulations to Tim on the award and to the work that he does to bring education to our students at the ALC.
Fantastic. Great. Mr. Striebel?
Yes, I have a board salute to the Foundation for Dubuque Public Schools. As many of you know, they're very successful Enhancing Excellence Luncheon last week. I know a member, a number of the board members attended. I was not able to attend. I was actually attending May Henshaw's presentation on Green Dot at our local Rotary. But I know that we were well represented at that event. We recognize the support of the foundation, its board, and the many donors who worked to provide additional resources and opportunities for students across our district. In connection with that, a special congratulations to Sheriff Faub for being the first recipient of the foundation's Hometown Alumni Award. At that event, apparently not only did Jack Hostiger speak, who was a former, is a senior, rather, at Hempstead High School, but Madison Davis, who is the daughter of a former board member, George Davis, who is the first-year student at the United States Military Academy at West Point, were highlighting the impact of the Dubuque Community School District education. So we appreciate their efforts as well. Mr. President?
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
I actually also attended the symphony or band concert, fifth graders through high school, last Thursday at senior high school. My son is a trumpet player in the fifth-grade band. They weren't bad, but really impressive showing. There was over 700 musicians on the floor and probably in excess of 2,000 people in the stands. It was really a cool event and they had the, one of the professors from the University of Dubuque, they're choreographed a number for the, for the high school senior band. Really extraordinary group of musicians. And if I had one criticism, it would be nice if they'd save parking spaces for board members because it was hard to, it was really crowded, but it was really a neat event.
That's great. That's great, yeah. Now if we gave those 2,000 people that were in attendance all to call the governor and talk about adequate school funding because they're seeing it in person right there in terms of what that does. So in addition to the board member parking spaces, keep working on those. Great, thank you. Thank you all.
Ready?
Yep.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the budget estimate and authorized payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the budget estimate and authorized payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Kelleher, you can review the budget.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Ryan Gans. Tonight we are proposing to you the, to adopt the budget for the '15-'16 school year and along with that, the levy rate to assess the taxpayers for next year's funding. Each year we put together a budget booklet that has a lot of the documents in it with what we're going to talk about tonight. Has a lot of the calculations in it, shows a history of where things, where we spend our dollars. It calculates our spending authority, talks about unspent balance. We're not going to do all of that tonight. You've heard it several times, so tonight I'm just going to go over some of the highlights. This is one of the pages in that document. Thank you, Stan. Okay, there we go. This is one of the pages in the document that I'd like to bring your attention to. And it's particular the line graph on the bottom left-hand side of the page. It is a 10-year history of the state supplemental aid formerly known as allowable growth. It shows history, as I said, 10 years with, you're seeing a few years ago, five, six years ago, so a consistent pattern of about 4%. So we could plan accordingly. We knew we were going to get 4% new money from the legislature. Then things got a little difficult in the economic crisis in the 2008-2009 era. And you can see they adjusted our spending, our growth in those years. Went down 2%, 0%, and has kind of gradually grown back the last couple of years. And last year was at 4%, back to what it had been historically or in previous years. This year is kind of a different scenario. They were supposed to have set that state supplemental aid amount in February of 2014. So that's 15 months ago. That would have allowed us to help budget accordingly for this year, as well as do some planning and help with our negotiation process because we would have known what our funding is. The chart has four dots on it and each of those dots represent a different percentage. 4% is the amount the Senate passed earlier in the legislative session. The number at 1.25 represents the amount the House has currently settled at or suggested as a state supplemental aid for the upcoming year. 2% is kind of a middle of the road. And in the documents in our publication, we use 2% for a lot of the calculations just because it was the middle of the road. When we were working on this back in February, 0% is, wasn't really a possibility. 0% is what will happen if we can't get the House and Senate to agree. If they can't come up with a set amount, then the law says that it's 0. Feelings in Des Moines lately have said 0% has become a real possibility. And what that means is we will not receive any money higher than the amount we received this year. If that were to happen, we would receive a little bit because we would fall under the budget guarantee, which is 101% of the current year. So we would get at least 1%, but that's only because that guarantee exists. Okay?
Kevin, that's just for one year.
That's correct. It's for one year. Next year's amount will be based on 0%, no matter what, when they go to calculate the And this I wanted to show you on the right is the pie chart of expenditures broken down percentage for our general fund. Our general fund is what we use for day-to-day operations. It's different than our capital projects, which is the Pebble and the sales tax that's used for, you know, new construction, buildings, IT, 3.5 million IT program, school buses, things like that. That's all in capital projects. This fund, which is the general fund, that's what we're talking about on this page. You can see we spend about 80% of our general fund dollars on salaries and benefits. And statewide, that's kind of the key figure where districts that want to see district spending, we're in a people service business. And statewide, that's a good number to be using for a ratio for general fund expenditures. So we're good on that amount. The problem, as I said earlier, is if they don't raise that amount, we won't be receiving any additional dollars. The next two graphs or document pieces that I want to show you is the top left. That is a 10-year history of our levy rate that we have proposed and accepted for the taxpayers. You can see 10 years ago, it was right around $15. And then over a couple of years, it grew to $17 and stayed at that level. Now over the last few years, we've actually decreased it. We've had enough cash on hand and our expenditures allowed us to decrease what we needed from the taxpayers to operate. So we did not keep it at the same level. We lowered it to meet our needs. And you see that reflective here. For the upcoming school year, we are asking for a slight increase over last year, about 14 cents. The bottom piece shows where our current levy rate that we're asking you to accept tonight compares to the other UENs' last year's fiscal rate. You can see it is quite a bit lower than Sioux City's and is actually at the bottom of all the UENs. Now some of their rates for this year will probably go down a little bit because they're also budgeting on 0%. But I don't feel that they'll fall that much below anything we propose. Some more information I'd like to show you, and this is not in this document, but it's just kind of informational. I wanted to compare the city, the county, and the school district for 10-year history just to show where all three entities have been. You can see with the county, which is at the bottom, they've been right around that $16.17 up to 40 cents. So they've kind of had the same amount or same levy rate throughout this 10-year process. The city, on the other hand, has grown just a little bit and has leveled off this last three years. They've proposed the same rate. And then on top is the school district. So you can see we are a larger portion of the total assessment, but our rate has come down. So if someone were to say, "Well, it looks like you're raising the levy rate this year," you can respond, "Well, we've lowered it the last three or four years to fit our needs and now, you know, we're just increasing it only 14 cents, which is about 1%." So you'll have that as a talking point. And please stop me and ask me any questions along the way if you have some. This last one is another document we show every year and is, "How is our levy rate going to affect our taxpayers?" Let me blow that up a little bit. So what this is, this is part of what the city does each year too. They take a house assessed at $130,000 roughly and show how the rollback, how the equalization order affects, compares one year to the next. So you can see for residential, the taxes are actually going to go up about $35 on a house assessed at 130. That's not what they pay on taxable value because you have to take that times that equalization order and the rollback. And you can see the, the rollback actually increased, which makes more of the assessed valuable, assessed value subject to tax this past year. And that's set statewide. Our increase of the 1%, the 14 cents, and again, it's about a $35 increase. Now let's talk about the commercial and the industrial. Last year, the governor had proposed and was passed a plan to reduce taxes for commercial and industrial properties. And you can see that here in the '15-'16 column, they created that rollback. Last year was a 95% rollback. This year it's 90%. So that's taking the assessed value times that percentage to come up with your taxable value and that's what they're paying on. So with that increased, change in rollback, you see that commercial taxpayers are actually paying less than they did this year. Or for this year, they're going to pay less than they did last year. Same thing on the industrial. They also have a rollback, so their total taxable value has gone down as well. They have that 95% and then the 90% rollback. So their amount of taxes they will be paying based on our levy rate is going down. Any questions on that?
Kevin?
Yes, sir.
How does tax increment financing, or the company called TIF?
How does that affect property taxes or schools' amount or?
Okay. It affects different funds differently. For the management fund and the general fund, if a city were to buy property and use TIF for it, what happens is it comes in at a baseline value and then any incremental value in that property over the 10 years of the TIF is paid to the city. The school district does not get to increase that amount and charge the additional assessed value to the tax, that particular property in the TIF area. So the city gets those property taxes on the assessed value, but the district, or the school district, the county, NICC does not. So that's how that works.
Except for when the time expires and they would.
Correct. Now in the Pebble Fund, which is a portion of the levy besides the general fund, that is not the case. We get the full value of the increase in assessed value. And same with the instructional support levy, which is a small piece of the general fund levy. In both of those cases, we get the full value.
Kevin, just a comment. I mean, we've lauded the fact the last few years that we've been able to decrease our levy rate. I think a total of almost 15% over that period of time. But we also, with another, you know, with a recognition that we may have to adjust that up occasionally. But I think the ruling philosophy has always been, "We'll only take as much as we need to," rather than, you know, either kind of pad it one year or pull back too much the next year. And so the message the taxpayers should take away is that we're still governed by that rule, kind of a self-monitoring rule of only taking as much as we absolutely have to. But I'm delighted that we've been able to keep the rate as low as we've been able to keep it, even in a, you know, rough financial environment.
And I think we should be proud of being able to lower that from $3 over that three- or four-year period. Eventually, as we are now, we're going to have to possibly increase it. We are increasing 14 cents this year.
So compared to about four years ago, I believe the average, again, your numbers, the average taxpayer is down about 30 bucks. I mean, they're not getting rich quick, but it's, hopefully it is an example of how we are committed to not.
And that would depend on how that assessed value, if, you know, if they were increased and things like that. But if it was, everything was the same, yes, they'd be.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kelleher?
I move that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow for public comments.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Is there anyone in the chamber who's wishing to comment on the, on the budget estimate and the proposal?
I move that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excuse me, motion carries.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education adopt the budget estimate for fiscal 2015-2016 as published.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the budget estimate for fiscal 2015-16 as published. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the Child Internet Protection Action and authorized payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the Child Internet Protection Action and authorized payment of the legal notice publication cost to the Telegraph Herald. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Culberson?
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Ryan Gans. I'll try to keep my comments brief tonight, but one of the reasons I'm presenting about the Child Internet Protection Act is that we are required by federal law to have a public hearing, technology measures in place, and internet safety policy. So I'm going to go over those items just to give you a brief overview of what those would entail. But you're probably wondering, why are we even talking about the Children, Child's Internet Protection Act? Where does this come from? Where does this have any rationale and bearing in our schools? And we participate in a program called E-Rate. It's monitored by the FCC. It's called, actually, you might recognize it more under the Universal Service Fund. You ever look at your telecommunications bills, your telephone or your cellular phone, there's a USF surcharge on there. What happens is, is that, that is a program that is administered by the FCC where they take a portion of those dollars to subsidize programs that they have underneath Universal Service. One of the programs that we get to benefit from is a public school district or public library is called the E-Rate Program. What happens is, is that we get to file year after year for all of our internet, internet or telecommunications charges and then we will get reimbursed by the federal government to either discount the bills by the service provider based on our school and lunch data, our frame-reduced lunch data, or we can submit a request from the government to send us a check at the end of the filing year. So that's where this program is operated from. And what happened is they implemented a measure called the Child Internet Protection Act. And what that entails is, if I just move forward here, is basically, what is it? The Child Internet Protection Act was enacted by Congress in 2000 and was actually put into effect, I believe, in April 2001, which really puts all public institutions as far as public elementary, or public schools, and possibly even public libraries, who can also participate in these funds as well, to monitor children's access to obscene or harmful information over the internet content, basically. The legislation includes provisions related to the E-Rate Program, which I discussed earlier about, and that's administered by the FCC. Also part of the Title III dollars of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, the ESEA, or ESEA is administered by the U.S. Department of Education. There's also dollars that comes in here that we have, we are required to have an internet safety policy and also technology measures in place so that a student gets onto a computer in our district, if they go to anything that's harmful, we can show that we have protective measures to actually circumvent that information so they're not viewing that obscene material. SIPA is what most commonly is what the Child Internet Protection Act is called, poses certain requirements on schools or libraries that receive federal funding. Basically, like I said, the discounts for internet access or telecommunications. Every year we get approximately, based on our national school lunch, frame-reduced school lunch data, we get about 60% off of our telecommunications and internet access bills through our providers like CenturyLink, you know, also our state of Iowa, which is, excuse me, long distance for our telephones. And so we'll get a portion of those dollars back either in discounting from the, from the actual provider or we file at the end of the year to get a check reimbursed back to the district. It's some, it's a decent amount of funds that we, we get from this program. And so this program makes certain communication services and products more affordable for our schools by participating in that program. So that's what really SIPA is all about here, is that's what it was enacted for. So what does the Child Internet Protection Act require? It requires, what I said earlier, is that schools that, or libraries subject to SIPA may not receive discounts offered by the E-Rate Program unless they certify that they've done three things. They have an internet safety policy in place. They have enforcement of technology protection measures, which again, is monitoring what we can do for their, on our computers and conducting a public notice and hearing about the aforementioned two items, which we're doing tonight. So the internet safety policy, what does that constitute? What should be adopted and implemented? Access by minors to inappropriate matters on the internet. The safety and security of minors when using electronic email, chat rooms, and other forms of direct electronic communication. Unauthorized access like hacking or other unlawful activity. communication, unauthorized access like hacking or other unlawful activities by minors online, and measuring, measures restricting minors' access to harmful materials. That's what the internet safety policy needs to have in place. Also, the FCC did decide in July 1st of 2012, that when we certify our compliance in the federal program, we also have to be saying that we're educating our minors about appropriate online behavior. So in talking with our lead technology coach, David Muller, he's saying that through our digital citizenship program that we offer, when our technology coaches work with the kids, we talk to them about appropriate online behavior. We also discuss that in our eighth grade digital literacy classes as well. So how does DCSD comply with the internet safety policy requirement? We have a policy in place. It's called our acceptable use policy. It's District Policy 5504, which addresses those same items that we discussed before. It doesn't say internet safety policy in its name, but it does address those items. So if I was to actually view that policy, it is as such, and I'm sorry, you don't have it on the screen. But that's what that policy basically talks about. If we scroll through that policy, it discusses online appropriate behavior, it talks about chat unauthorized online behavior and materials that students, and then also talking about we are going to use technology measures to prevent access for students to see inappropriate materials. So I'm just going to pull that back. And also, I just took a snippet of what that policy states. Student internet activities will be monitored by the school district through a system restricting students from accessing inappropriate sites that have visual depictions that include obscenity, child pornography, or are harmful to minors. The school district will use technology protection measures to comply with SIPA. So what does that technology protection measure really mean? And that means we need to block or filter inappropriate activity on our systems. So we do that by implementing a McAfee perimeter web gateway, sorry, I'm stumbling over my own words tonight, McAfee perimeter web gateway appliance, which basically filters internet content to safeguard content that is obscene, harmful to minors, and if you go anywhere on any of our computers, if you type in anything that's inappropriate, it filters it, it'll block the page where children can't get out and see that material. Also, if our computers leave district premises and they take them home, for example, it's still being content filtered as required by the law. So that's basically, what we have to do is we have to show that we had a public meeting, that we have the technology measures in place, which we do, and that we also have an internet safety policy, which is part of our acceptable use policy. In order for us to certify and be compliant with this program, we have to have that on file. So that's why I'm here tonight to talk about this for you. Yes?
Kobe, in the event that someone actually does a search for inappropriate material, are we able to track from which computer that request is made?
That is correct, Mr. Byatt. And we are able to find out what computer it's made from, and also if they're logging in with their own username and password, we can also find out that it was Kobe Culberson that requested that, and that we can intervene. And we've done that on a few occasions with building administration.
I have a question.
Building administration intervened, we didn't.
Oh, sorry. It was prohaskus. Sorry. Thank you.
Just kidding.
Kobe, what do you do about, like, if it doesn't, I guess there are filters in place, like, they know if the website's obscene even though, let's say, the title of it isn't, or anything that they were to, you know how websites can seem okay? But then when they, I'm just curious, you know, there's, obviously, there's going to be possible loopholes, but, I'm sorry?
There is no system out there that is 100%. There are things that fall through the cracks. And what we do is when we find that, we either report that to the subscription service, and then what happens is it gets included and gets vetted and rated, and it'll be added in there. So to say that we are 100% compliant, that we find, and this would be true of any vendor you talk to, either in corporate America or also in any public entity, there are some things that slip through the cracks. And we, we're in that point more reactionary than we are proactive, but we do try to address those as soon as possible.
So do we presently have a parental consent form in our policy?
A parental consent form as far as, for them to...
As far as the students giving their child the rights to use the computer, et cetera?
Basically, what we have is a passive consent form, basically meaning that everybody has access to the internet unless the parent decides not to, they have to opt out of that clause. It's to use with the, to use with, to use the internet and say that some, that we don't want them to be part of that, we basically want to make sure that they're able to opt out of that, but we do allow that carte blanche, basically, from K through 12, that there is no parental form that they actually sign off on unless they want to opt out of. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
I move, Board of Education, open the public hearing to allow public comments.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education open the public hearing to allow public comments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there anyone in the chambers wishing to make a public comment on this?
I move, Board of Education, close the public hearing and return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education close the public hearing and return to regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve Policy Number 5504, Student Network Internet Acceptable Use Policy.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Policy Number 5504, Student Network Internet Acceptable Use Policy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. Is there anybody in the chambers wishing to address the board at this time?
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any board members wishing to pull anything from the consent agenda for separate Not hearing any? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. I believe that brings us to the Facilities Support Services Committee report. Ms. Seager.
Yes. I'll give just a brief recap before I make the motions on, we met last week for nearly an hour and a half of facilities. We discussed a few things that were in the consent agenda, excuse me, including point-of-sale software for our meal program. It'll help us become more compliant with inaccuracies for the reports we have to generate in the meal program. The Loris College Productions Agreement we just approved, that's our video production services, some literacy software for elementary schools, and then also, we discussed resolutions that will be, I'll be bringing up here for motions, for sale of property. We discussed at length the budget. Kevin went over that. We also did some project recaps. We were given, Hempstead is going along very well and is ahead of schedule, I guess, which is great news. Senior, they're moving to the next phase for the senior renovation. I believe there's a few of you that are going to be going to Chicago to visit some schools that have had the same renovations. That was discussed briefly. We also went over the 10-year facility plan, which I will make a motion here for that, and then also some motions I'm going to bring forward here for some construction contracts so we can move forward with those projects. So I will move forward with some of these things. So I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution, whereas pursuant to Policy Number 8142, the district is offering the personal property listed for sale by public bid on govdeals.com, April 8th through 22nd of 2015 as follows. Auction items include weightlifting equipment, halide lighting, Danfoss and Copland compressors, 2005 International School Bus, books, stage curtain, and a trench box, and is giving notice thereof as required by said policy. And whereas, one or more of the items listed may draw a bid more than $5,000, requiring notice hearing and board action to determine whether such bid or bid should be accepted. Now therefore, be it resolved, in the event any of the items listed draws a bid more than $5,000, a public hearing shall be held May 11th, 2015, at 5:30 PM at the Forum, 2300 Cheney Road in Dubuque, Iowa, to determine whether such bid or bid should be accepted. Notice of the time and place of the public hearing shall be published in the Telegraph Herald as required.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the resolution regarding the district's offering of personal property listed for sale by public bid on govdeals.com as read. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution, whereas the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, the district anticipates a proposal to sell real property located along the southwest side of the Audubon Elementary School grounds, 605 Lincoln Avenue, Dubuque, Iowa, generally described as the southwesterly 15 feet of lots 2 and 3 of Mineral Lot 314, and additional area within the southeasterly 12 feet of the southwesterly 20 feet of Lot 2 of ML 314, to be platted substantially as described above by plat a survey, to be recorded prior to conveyance and consisting of approximately 4,453 square feet in area. And whereas, it is appropriate pursuant to Iowa Code, Section 297.22, to set a hearing on the proposed conveyance and to publish a notice of the proposed conveyance and of the hearing, and to receive and consider public comment for and against the proposed conveyance. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, Section 1, that this board shall hold a public hearing to consider a proposal to convey the above-described property by whatever descriptions and in whatever dimensions it may be hereafter described by a final plat a survey on May 11th, 2015, at 5:30 PM at the Forum, 2300 Cheney Road in Dubuque, Iowa. Section 2, that the secretary is authorized and directed to prepare, publish, and distribute a notice of such hearing. I beg...
You got out of breath?
No, I'm good.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded, I'm sure they had to read the whole abstract of that document.
Oh, my God.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the resolution regarding the proposal to sell real property located along the southwest side of Audubon Elementary School grounds. Any discussion?
I think it should be noted that this involves the city and the B branch.
About a 14-foot-wide strip of land, I believe. 13 to 14.
Cut down a lot of trees.
Yep. They have, yep. They're moving forward.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 10-year facility plan as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the 10-year facility plan as submitted. Mr. Ryan Gans, you want to...
Sure. So as you know, for the past several years, we have produced a 10-year facility plan based off of expenditures from the 1-cent sales tax as well as the PEPAL levy. We review that annually as we have major projects going on. You also know that we started the planning process at senior high school earlier this school year with a targeted budget of $25 million. Also on the plan was a future expenditure at Roosevelt and Washington Middle Schools for $2.5 million, I'm sorry, Jefferson and Washington Middle Schools, thank you, each. We are posing to take that $5 million and slide that into the budget for the senior high renovations. We do that not because we're not concerned with our need for renovations at Jefferson and Washington, but because this plan is built on a 0% growth model, and that we know over the 10, 11 years of the 1-cent sales tax, there's been about a 2.5% growth during that timeframe. So looking at the timing and when we would get to a middle school renovation project at either or both of those two middle schools, those dollars will have recouped themselves, or we would have generated more dollars. So we can move these dollars into the senior high project because they're needed there, and also maintain the timeline that we would have had at the Jefferson and Washington Middle Schools. In addition to that, we are hopeful that there will be legislative action this session, if not this session, the next session, to extend the life of the 1-cent sales tax so that we can continue to do the renovations that are badly needed at some of our other schools as well. So just moving those $5 million forward doesn't remove Washington or Jefferson from the placeholder as the next top priority, and we believe through growth, we'll have those dollars to spend at the time when we would have spent them anyway.
Any other discussion?
I mean, the legislation's been so good to schools so far this session. Let's see if they get this one...
Why wouldn't we be optimistic? How can you not be optimistic?
How could you not?
They got that whole calendar thing figured out.
Yes, they do.
Right on time.
About a month and a half, anyway.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution approving construction contract certificate of insurance and bonds. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa, that the construction contract and bonds executed and insurance coverage for the senior high school Stone Repointing 2015 project, as described in detail in the plans and specifications heretofore approved, and which have been signed by the contractor, be and the same, are hereby approved, and Board President is authorized to execute said contract on behalf of the district outlined as follows. Contractor, R&amp;W Restoration LLC, date of contract, March 17th, 2015. Bond surety, Western Surety Company, $163,500. Date of bond, March 24th, 2015.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the resolution approving construction contract certificate of insurance in bonds for the senior high school Stone Repointing 2015 project as read. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the following resolution approving construction contract and certificate of insurance, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque, Iowa, that the construction contract and insurance coverage for the Bryant School Historic Window Replacement Project have been signed and provided to the district by the contractor, and the same are hereby approved, and Board President is authorized to execute said contract on behalf of the district outlined as follows. Contractor, Conlin Construction Company, date of contract, April 13th, 2015.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education adopt the resolution approving construction contract and certificate of insurance for the Bryant School Historic Window Replacement Project as read. Any discussion?
Just a reminder that this is, this project is a result of very generous donation to the district that will allow us to not only replace the windows at Bryant to their original state as far as size, but far more energy efficient, provide a better learning environment for our students, and does include some additional things like outside lighting. So it's a phenomenal project, likely would be way down the priority list as far as our ability to do it through taxpayer dollars, so a very generous donation that we're very thankful to have.
Outstanding. Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve Stockton Johnson Architects PC as the architect engineer for the Bryant School Historic Window Replacement Project in the amount of $48,000.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Stockton Johnson Architects PC as the architect engineer for the Bryant School Historic Window Replacement Project in the amount of $48,000. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve IIW PC as the architect engineer for the Elementary School Interactive Projector Project in the amount of $12,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve IIW PC as the architect engineer for the elementary, or for the Elementary School Interactive Projector Project, projector project, in the amount of $12,000. That's tough. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Keller, are you going to present the budget?
Before. Let's prove it.
Before. Let's prove it.
Dean, again, just wanted to bring to your attention a couple pieces of information in your budget. We present those each quarter for you to review, and on pages 257 of your packet and 258, it has to do with the revenues received year-to-date for the general fund, the management fund, and the Pebble Fund. You can, we're 75% through the year, and all three of those funds are not quite at 75%. That's because we receive two large payments of property taxes in October, November of the year, and then again in April and May, so those amounts are not reflected in the year-to-dates as yet. So when those come in, the percentages will go up substantially. The Pebble Fund also is a little higher than 75%, and that's because of the donation we received for the Bryant windows. That's about 20% of the total revenue for the Pebble Fund total, so that's why that's coming in, and it's making the Pebble Fund actually a little bit higher than 75%. The last thing is on page 260 of your packet, has to do with the total expenditures comparing of the sales tax fund. When you look at expenses year-to-date plus the open POs, so the payments that haven't been met, and compare that to the budget, you see there's about a $4.3 million deficit. That is because that open PO number includes the Hempstead, total Hempstead project, of which there's supposed to be roughly four, four and a half million dollars that will take place in payments in the next school year. Okay? That's the reason for that number. Thank you.
Thanks, Evan.
Great. Thank you. All right. Mr. Prohaska, Educational Programs Policies Strategy Committee report.
Yes, we met last Tuesday, and we basically had several items. We have the Special Education Service Delivery Plan.
We voted.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
What's that?
I don't think we did.
You voted before the exit.
Oh, I'm sorry.
With a little...
Sorry.
Okay. Okay, anyway, we had Rosie Warder present the Special Education Service Delivery Plan. It's a, every five years, a school district has to outline how they're going to provide special education for our needy students. We also had a report on the professional development survey. It was kind of an average of values. This is basically determining how our teachers and administrators value the professional development that's taking place in our district. It came out with some very high marks. We also had a presentation on the middle school performance character pilot update, and it's something that's being worked on continually. This is our character component of our strategic plan for our students.
It's actually the performance part of, with the, it's not character, because that's what they changed. And I will have to say-
The performance character in.
And they changed the name of it. This is the one that has been kind of stuck in me for a long time, and I kept sending it back and saying to relook at it. And they really have done a very good job, I will have to say, of looking at it again and taking the word "character" out of it and just basing it on what's the performance expectations of a student who is in a classroom. Based, it's not what they're learning, but it's how they're performing. And they've really broken it down into some much clearer expectations that can be more uniform throughout the district, and it's not so subjective. And I will just say that they've done a very good job of revamping that. So I was very happy to see what they have done, because I was always questioning what they were doing. But it was good, ended up good so far.
Okay, also, we had a Lyndon Vanny report about the de-silt, the Dubuque School Instructional Leadership Team, indicating that they'd like to be more parental involvement on this committee, and they're going to be working on more guidelines to get more parental involvement. We also discussed the broadcasting policy regarding school board meetings, whether onsite or offsite. And then there was a discussion and mention of an alteration of the bus procedures. Basically, our present policy was very strict as far as allowing students to, being allowed to maybe go home with somebody else after an event, provided they had parental consent. Now, 24-hour notice in some cases, or 36 hours in some other cases, are necessary to have a parental signature to allow a student to not be restricted to returning on the same bus. So it's a common sense thing, makes more sense for parents and families. Other than that, that's about it.
If I could, real quick, just to be clear, we did discuss the Special Education Service Delivery Plan at length, but Rosie Warder, our special director, is home with the-
Right.
-ill tonight, and so we will bring it back to probably the subcommittee and the full board next month for approval. So it was discussed, but it will come to the board for approval next month.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that, Stan. Thank you very much, Mr. Prohaska. Brings us to new business.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education extend the contract with Superintendent Stan Reingans through June 30th, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education extend the contract with Superintendent Stan Reingans through June 30, 2018. Any discussion? Just to inform the public, we have a rolling three-year contract with the superintendent, so as we approach the end of another school year, we're typically going through an evaluation process and looking to extend it, so that's what we're doing. We are, as many are anticipating or hoping, that we will have some direction regarding funding, so there's no, we hold pat relative to compensation, but this does in fact extend the contract to continue with a three-year contract term for the superintendent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education excuse seniors for making up two snow days in June.
Second.
Uphill both ways.
Well, we were confident in making-
I know, that's why I like doing this one.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education excuse seniors for making up two snow days in June. Any discussion?
I felt really confident about this recommendation until I read the paper on Sunday about the large snowstorm in Dubuque this year. Happened a few days ago, so.
Yeah, it got passed.
Yeah. We're lucky to only have had two snow days, and I think we're all set for the rest of this year.
Fantastic. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to students number 805401, 802060, and number 812353 at this time.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to students 805401, 802060, and 812353 at this time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Board member, any issues, commentary?
I want to bring up one thing regarding the school calendar that kind of Craig referred to earlier. And the governor did allow an earlier start date than we have, and I don't think there's any interest necessarily in this board in revisiting our calendar. There were some issues, AP classes, semester class, et cetera, but I think that we should maybe just inform the public that we're going to be sticking with our existing calendar, and we're not going to make any alterations or changes.
Yeah, I think this, excuse me, I think this board and certainly administrative staff made that really clear when we adopted it, that we intended to lack in any movement in Des Moines, which we were told we thought would have, that we felt it was important to give that kind of clarity out there. There's never a good answer, there's always something that, you know, is impacted, but I think we've held firm that we need to get that established and that we will modify it as conditions allow us to do that again next year.
This may, down the road, let's say for next year's calendar, the following year, I don't know what kind of direction we're going to be given then. I don't know if this is going to be allowed again, but this may cause, there may be some alterations next year.
Absolutely. We'll look at it on a year-by-year basis, based on the parameters set in Des Moines, and certainly had we had this flexibility in a more timely manner, we might have developed a slightly different calendar. But for the four or five days, it would certainly create hardship for many people who've had the calendar for over a month to make plans.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Administrative issues, any?
Just briefly, I'd like to thank the board for their continued confidence in extending my contract. It's certainly my pleasure to serve as the superintendent for the Dubuque Community School District, and I enjoy every minute of it, and I appreciate your vote of confidence.
You're welcome. Preview of the upcoming board meeting, May 11th.
We're not all in school yet. Well, we'll still be in, we'll still be in school, and the days will be a little bit warmer, but it'll be a traditional business meeting such as this.
Very good. All right. Hearing nothing else, we are adjourned. Thank you.